I think so. If you are not the applicant and you're here to speak on an item, please sign up on the sign up sheet for that specific item. There are five sheets on the back table. Thanks. I don't see Carrie.
Do you want to go ahead and have Mr. Ramey?
You get to be the chairman of the house.
Oh, me. Thank you so much.
Got a promotion already.
Yeah.
Let's pick up the pace here, look.
It was.
How are you?
You can do it. This is okay. You can do it now.
No, no, I want to do it.
You're not going to be able to do it again.
You're welcome.
You aren't. You're unqualified.
Okay.
Okay.
We ready?
We're ready. All we need is the hammer.
All right. I call order the 11th of May Planning Commission meeting. Director Salmon, please announce the meeting procedures.
Thank you. We encourage you to wear a mask if you're in here and to observe six-foot social distancing, which seems to be exactly what you're doing. So, thank you. When your name is called, please come to the podium. Please address your comments to Planning Commission and not to the audience. Any questions you ask will be answered once everyone who has signed up has spoken. We understand that you may have strong feelings, one way or another, out of courtesy. Unless it is your turn to speak, please remain silent. Please refrain from applauding, cheering, booing, or other verbal outbursts. This is a fact-finding hearing. There is no need to repeat what has already been said. If a previous speaker stated points that you wish to make, you may simply acknowledge that so that the hearing may proceed. The applicant will have five minutes to speak. Other speakers will have three minutes apiece. Please respect the time limit.
Okay. Mr. Stoddard, please call the roll.
Hobby? Sharma?
Present.
Erickson?
Present.
Stafford?
Here.
Scott? Kirky? Greenway?
Present.
Lamond?
Here.
Davis?
Present.
Walker?
Here.
Val?
Here.
Ramey?
I'm here. Okay. May I have a motion and second for approval of last month's meeting minutes?
Having reviewed the minutes, I make a motion that we accept them.
Okay, I'm second.
Second.
Okay, approved. May I have a motion and a second for approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Agenda has been approved.
Well, not quite.
Oh, not quite.
No. I think we would need a roll call. Not a roll call. Just a voice vote. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Can I get a voice vote on the paper approving agenda? Please say aye.
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 Same motion for no? Okay, so it is approved. Now can we proceed? Okay. First matter of business is a consent agenda. May I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, approved. Director Salmon, please present the consent agenda.
Thank you. We have three items tonight on the consent agenda. Number one is a miscellaneous application requesting an extension of the Chick-fil-A demolition and rebuild approval, which was first granted in 2021. This is for a property located at 100 Cornerstone Boulevard. The recommendation is to approve the extension of site plan approval for the Chick-fil-A rebuild, approving it to March 11th, 2024, because it meets the requirements of Hot Springs Code 16425. The second item is miscellaneous application 23051, an application for limited outdoor display in a C2 zone district for property located at 901 Hobson Street. The recommendation is to approve this with five conditions. The conditions are as follows: A site plan shall be regulatory. Number two, items in the area for display shall be kept orderly and shall be limited as described on the application site plan. Number three, dimension, striping, and number of parking spaces shall be compliant with Hot Springs Code Section 16 to 103.6. Number four, pavement, parking, and access shall be compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act. And number five, this approval is only for the open display request and does not approve food truck use. Number three, a large-scale development site plan, number SPA 23052. This is an application for multi-building townhome development to be located at approximately 203 Thornton Ferry Road. Recommendation is for approval. And, what the heck. Excuse me.
Yes, Your Majesty.
That's it. Sorry. Recommendation is for approval and keeping the original conditions. I believe. 901, yes, Thornton Ferry.
Director Salmon, there was, I think, six conditions of approval on 203 Thornton Ferry?
Yes, and they were in here. Yes. The large-scale development site plan conditions have been met. The approval is with six conditions. Number one, the development site plan shall be constructed and developed in strict accordance with the approved site and development plan, including but not limited to location of buildings, access drive, parking, and landscaping. Number two, all construction and construction activity are to be accomplished in strict accordance with all applicable approval conditions and with minimum standards, codes, rules, and regulations, and policies, as may now or hereafter be required or enacted by the City of Hot Springs, the State of Arkansas, and/or the United States of America, including the Arkansas Fire Prevention Code, whether or not submitted for staff review or Planning Commission approval. Number three, required permits and/or approvals shall be in hand for Garland County Stormwater and the City of Hot Springs Utility Department prior to any work beginning. Number four, all exterior lighting, if any, shall be fully downcast, fully shielded, and shall contain all illumination on the subject property. Number five, the new six-inch water main extension must be ductile iron pipe to the new fire hydrant. Number six, the approved large-scale development site plan application shall be in effect for one year approval, shall be in effect for one year from the date of Planning Commission approval. Prior to its expiration date, the Director of Planning and Development may extend the original site plan approval for up to two one-year periods upon the applicant's written request. Planning Commission approval of any project that has not fully secured all required permits within the period set forth shall be null and void. This approval will be effective until May 11, 2024. And that concludes the consent agenda items. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Director Salmon. Mr. Stoddard, will you please call the roll for a motion to approve?
Sharma?
Mr. Chairman, have we ascertained? We don't have anyone who's come to speak out on those, these proposals?
This is consent.
Consent.
Okay.
But we're voting. I can still check to see if they're.
Voting to approve. Yes.
Okay. Back to roll call. Sharma?
Aye.
Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Greenway?
Approve.
Lamond?
Approve.
Davis?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Val?
Approved.
And Ramey?
Approved. The consent agenda has been approved, and next we move on to new business. Ms. Salmon, please, well, wait a minute. Need to get a motion to get the matter up from the floor. Motion and second does not mean you're necessarily in favor of the application. May I have a motion and second to approve the item?
So moved. Second.
Okay, it's approved. Director Salmon, please present staff report on the item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is RZ 23050, a zone change request from C4 to C2 for property located at 1801 Albert Pike Road. The applicant, Mr. Dustin Higgins with Half Associates Incorporated, represents property owner Robertson Family Trust. They are seeking zone change consideration from C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District to C2 General Business District for property located at 1801 Albert Pike Road, so that setback requirements will be consistent with the rest of the site, which is currently Zone C2. The subject property consists of approximately .518 acres. It's currently Zone C4, has a future land use plan map designation of linear commercial corridor, and is located in Board of Directors' District Number Three. It's at approximately the southwest corner of Albert Pike Road and Hammond Drive. There are two commercial structures there at this time with associated parking, landscaping, and signs. And most recently, they were an insurance office and a barber shop. The zoning surrounding it on the west is C2, the south is C2, and the north is C4, as is the east. The zoning demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development as all surrounding properties are zoned either C4 or C2, and the development in the area is consistent with those zones, including a federal post office, commercial shopping center, vehicle mechanical service and repair, car wash, vehicle sales, and tool rental. The requested zoning would be compatible with the adjacent shopping center zoning on the same side at Albert Pike and Hammond Drive. The applicant has successfully demonstrated that the standards for favorable consideration have been met. Planning Commission is able to establish a basis for recommending to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development. This property's future land use classification of linear commercial corridor is consistent with the requested C2 General Business District zoning. Recommendation to Planning Commission is that you recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map by designating the subject property C2 General Business District because the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, and because this request is consistent with the existing future land use plan map designation of linear commercial corridor. That concludes the presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, now, the applicant, please come forward and give your name and address for the record. And please notice, let us know if there's anything you'd like to add.
My name is, oh, sorry. My name is Dustin Higgins. I work for Half Associates. We're out of Bentonville, Arkansas. And you guys covered it pretty well, so I'm really just here to answer any questions, if you guys have any.
Any questions from the commission? Okay, no questions. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do we have anyone to speak against this? Okay, thank you.
We do not.
Okay, this time, we'll need a voice vote on the approval of item number four. Now, we need a roll call on this one, Rick.
Yes, sir.
Please give us a roll call.
This motion to approve, recommend approval. Erickson?
Approve.
Stafford?
Approve.
Greenway?
Approve.
Lamond?
Approve.
Davis?
Approve.
Walker?
Approve.
Val?
Approved.
Sharma?
Approve.
Ramey?
Approved. Item number four has been approved.
Yes, and item number four will be heard by the Board of Directors on June 6th in this room at 6 o'clock. Board of Directors will make the final decision on this request for rezoning.
And the Board of Directors has to approve all zoning changes. So, now we're going to move on to item number five. Ms. Salmon, please give us the four, item five, please.
Yes. Item number five is RZ 23056. This is a zone change request from R3 to C4 for property located at approximately 1810 Albert Pike Road.
Can we have staff report on this, please?
Yes. Do you want a motion to approve?
Can we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion approved, please.
Okay, thank you. The applicant is Fleury Commercial Properties LLC, seeking C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District zoning on 1.12 acres of land at approximately 1810 Albert Pike Road. Subject property is currently zoned R3 Low/Medium Density Residential and has a future land use classification of residential medium high. It's located in Board of Directors District Number Three. This application is for land that has been used in the past as landscape supply, which is a permitted use in C4. It's two unplatted lots. The lot along Albert Pike is Zone C4, and there is a landlocked lot behind that, which is zoned R3. The back lot currently and previously was used for storage of materials, accessory to the landscape supply, Hot Springs sod. And this request would change the zoning so that both lots are zoned consistently. Surrounding this, we have on the north R3, on the east C4, C2 General Business across the highway, and on the west is C4 Regional Commercial Open Display. Surrounding land uses are undeveloped timberland, Rogers Cycle and Marine, Chapman Automotive. And on the south, we have Arkansas Highway 270, also known as Albert Pike Road, and we have there Sutherland's Lumber and Home Improvement. To the west is Lloyd's Auto Sales. There are five findings that Planning Commission considers, actually six, in doing a request to rezone, and the rezoning request must respond to at least one of those findings in the affirmative. This does comply with the criteria on requiring compatibility with surrounding zoning. You must also, at this time, enter through commercially zoned land to get to this land that we are talking about changing to C4. The requested C4 zone district would eliminate the non-conforming status of landscape material historically stored on the R3 lot. It is compatible with surrounding uses and zoning, enabling Planning Commission to find that the requested zone change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding and zoning as required by Hot Springs Code Section 16 to 11E. If the change to C4 is approved, the full range of C4 uses would be possible. The portion of property subject to this zone change request has a future land use classification of residential, which is not compatible with the requested C4 zoning. To that end, a future land use map designation of linear commercial corridor would give the subject property a consistent future land use classification and would be consistent with surrounding C4 Regional Commercial Open Display zoned properties. The application does demonstrate that the standards for favorable consideration have been met, and that there is a basis for recommendation to the Board of Directors that the proposed change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and corrects existing used nonconformity. Recommendation to Planning Commission is that you recommend that the Board of Directors adopt an ordinance to amend the zoning map to designate the subject property C4 Regional Commercial Open Display District because the change demonstrates compatibility with surrounding development and zoning, and is consistent with the objectives of the zoning code, and to amend the future land use plan map to designate the subject property linear commercial corridor, consistent with surrounding commercial properties, future land use plan map designations. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Salmon. Would the applicant please come forward and give us your name and address for the record? And please note, let us know if you have anything to add.
Dorothy Fleury, 118 Ard Point, Hot Springs, Arkansas. I think Ms. Segman covered everything very well.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else to speak? Robin, no, no one speak. Okay. The public portion of this meeting is now closed. Commissioners, do you have any questions? No questions being there. Mr. Stoddard, will you please call, roll for the motion to approve?
Sir. Stafford?
Approve.
Greenway?
Approve.
Davis?
Approve.
Lamond?
Approve.
Val?
Approved.
Walker?
Approve.
Sharma?
Approve.
Erickson?
Approve.
And Ramey?
Approved. Item number five has been approved.
Item number five will be heard by the Board of Directors on June 6th at 6 o'clock in this room.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
And they will make the final decision.
Okay. All right. Director Salmon, do you have director support for us tonight?
I do.
Will proceed, please.
All right, we'll start with the most important one. Picture day, June 1st at 11:45 in this room. Katie Yamouche will take your picture for the website. So, do whatever it takes to get you at the absolute point of perfection to look the way you want to look for the next three years online. All right, on to the other things.
What time is this?
This will be at 11:45 in the morning.
Okay.
It'll be right before your agenda meeting.
I'm having someone clean my windows at 9 o'clock, so I'll be right.
Okay. If you're unable to make it at that time, unfortunately, that does not exempt you from picture-taking. We will find you and we will get a picture. So.
What dress do you deem appropriate for this picture?
That is entirely up to you. We trust you with these decisions, and I know you will make the right one.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, item number two. Arista Strungus and Chris Jeanette will be here on Thursday, June 8th at 5 o'clock. That's our regular June meeting day at 5 o'clock. That's one hour before our regularly scheduled meeting, and that will be here in board chambers. And they will present the finding. And they will present the findings and final zoning code assessment to you. And about half of that time will be them talking, and the rest of the time, you will have to answer questions. And if we don't have enough time to answer questions, we'll get them answered somehow. So that's a biggie, and we're expecting, fingers crossed, expecting to get that final zoning code assessment online tomorrow. So we're looking forward to that. Then, on May 30th, after the board's agenda meeting, also here in this room, 4 o'clock on May 30th, Russell Archimbo will present his findings based upon interviewing two dozen local authorities, census information, real estate market history, and current activity, as well as historical and anecdotal information about housing in Hot Springs. This is going to be a boardwork session. It's open to the public, and if you have any interest at all, please attend. I think there will be some interesting findings from his study. He is a nationally-known housing authority himself and has really done some good interviewing, much of which has, I think you've been involved in, many of you, on his interviews. So we're looking forward to those things. These are projects that we started months ago and keep waiting for something to happen, and something is happening, and of course, it's all happening within 10 days, so.
Director Salmon.
There you go.
Excuse me, would you say the time again?
4 o'clock for the housing strategy.
That's May 30th?
That's May 30th. Yep.
Dawn, could you please send us an email documenting these events, time, and location?
Yes, I will.
Thank you very much.
Including picture day.
Including picture day.
Okay.
And proper attire that day. Okay, is that it, Ms. Salmon?
It is.
Okay. Does anyone have anything else to go to the group today? Thank you all for being here. With no further business, I call for a motion to adjourn.
We adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you for being here.